Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out this evening. My name is Leona Roquell. I'm Vice President for Yaden Borough Council. And today is March 13th, 2025. And we will begin with our Borough Council Caucus meeting. First order of business, please rise to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kay?
Yes.
Could you please take roll call, please?
Yes. We'll start with our esteemed Mayor Rowan Hepkins.
President.
Our President Latoya Monroe is not with us this evening. Presiding would be Vice President Leona Roquell.
President.
Councilor Nicole Beating.
President.
Councilor Antonette Chuhar.
President.
Councilor Michael Trent.
Here.
Councilor Jessie Peeks.
President.
Councilor Lorraine Johnson.
President.
We have Brianna Bryant with Kill Kenny Law.
President.
And we have Mr. Nafis Nichols, our Finance Director.
President.
Yolanda Hughes, our Tax Collector is not with us this evening. And we have Megan Tadara with Penone Engineering.
President.
That concludes roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next order of business, Citizens Forum. I have one signing form. Are there others? All right, I would like to call Clara Johnson to the podium, please.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have two things of concern. One would probably be to the engineer, and that's about Redwood and Bailey. The there's blue lines on Yaden Avenue. I know that represents Aqua. But my question is, have Aqua did anything there? Will Aqua be doing anything there? What are those two lines on Yaden Avenue adjacent to Redwood?
May I answer?
Sure.
They are, blue lines are for Aqua.
Yes.
Spraying out water. There was a gas leak indicating down that Redwood avenue. Redwood indeed. There's been a series of gas issues down there. So the blue lines are just Aqua. There's some green lines down there, some yellow lines down there that indicate utilities.
But my question was from where Bailey and to Redwood.
Okay. The blue lines are for Aqua marking their actual utilities.
And so they have not been under.
They're not digger. We have a PA 1 call system. When anybody comes out to do a repair in the streets, either Aqua is a blue paint, the gas company is a yellow paint, the sewer authority is us, is a green paint. We paint the streets so that the utilities know where our lines and utilities are.
That wasn't my question, I'm sorry. My question was, I know that what those lines are. There are blue lines right where Bailey to Redwood. I know that's Aqua. My question is, have Aqua gone under the ground and do anything? Or those blue lines there because they're going to do something? And if they haven't done anything, if they have done anything, how would the residents know that the blue lines are still there?
Aqua's. Let's go back to the PA 1 call. If PICO comes out, or we come out, or Aqua comes out, everybody has to mark their utility, meaning Aqua, gas company, electric company, sewer company. When Aqua marks them lines out there, that's them indicating that their lines are there.
Have you been notified when you work in that area?
Yes, absolutely. There's a gas leak in that area.
So there might be. So there's always a buffer area when they mark the utility. They might, they might not. And since it was a leak, they probably don't know yet how big of an error it is. It is there until they dig it up and do their work.
That was my question.
It's just information for the person who's digging off and let them know where each utility is.
So they might come.
They might depending upon the damage.
So how would the residents know that they have come? Will those lines be raised? I mean, how would we as residents know that that has been?
If that road's going to be closed and Aqua notifies me that the road's going to be closed, or PICO notifies us that the road's going to be closed because of a gas leak, it goes on the, our website, it goes on to next door to notify residents.
Is the blue lines for the gas or is that for water?
It's for Aqua. They.
Aqua means water, yes.
Aqua means water. So the other utilities might not have even got out there yet to mark it?
They have a lawful date. So if a gas leak happens, or somebody suspects a gas leak today, and they send out a PA 1 call, we have a lawful time of four to five days to spray our lines. You might see one blue line. Gas company, sewer company, and a electric company didn't get out there. We have a lawful four or five days to spray these lines.
Or there might not be other utilities on that street.
They might not be there.
Yeah, they might not even be there.
Because those blue lines have been there more than a month already. That's what I asked the question. So may I ask a question? If, when the work is completed, they don't spray the lines black. They just continue to be there till they wear off.
We use a water base, all of us use a water base. That line will fade away.
Okay.
Within a month, it's gone. It's not a permanent mark. We have to go out, honestly. If the, if the water company still works in the area for the next four months, I go out every two weeks and freshen up our marks to make sure that they know our sewer's there. So when they dig up, they don't damage our sewer. It's an ongoing process during construction or investigation. It doesn't mean anything bad or good. It's just, it's there for the education of the person who's on the work. It's not, it's not an emergency situation.
I accept that, really. Um, my, there's another question, if I may.
Yes, you may.
I was at the toll and the public workshop meeting on Tuesday. I presented some pictures of the old Yaden Swim Club. And I want to know how far we've gotten with what we talked about at that meeting.
Okay. Mr. Pizzullo, would you like to let Ms. Johnson know how far we have gotten?
Absolutely.
With respect to what we discussed at that meeting?
As of that evening, as I walked out of that meeting, we contacted, I contacted contractors, and they cleaned up the area. And the machines have been removed, and the locks have been changed.
Do we know what that was that was done there? Because I did go downstairs.
It's clean fill. Most of it is for us, the borough, that we use for sinkholes, anti-depressants in the road, anything we need, that dirt. It's just clean filled dirt. It's not garbage, it's not.
That was going to be my question, was it hazardous?
No, no, it's clean. It's only clean fill, is all it is. We, as the borough, I go over there constantly, want to leave, release it, and dig dirt out of there, and fill up sinkholes, something at Great St. and Seventh Street. Something.
Okay, so my last question on that is that, yeah, some things happen, it's supposed to be every day too. And we were supposed to, well, you guys were supposed to, I say we because I live here. Getting locks there for that game, what's happening?
Today, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. I would like for Ms. Angela Lee to come to the podium at this time.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just have two statements. The first one, I noticed on McDay near Bell that, I don't know if you're aware, that the 15 Mile School thing, somebody punched a demolish thing out. So it doesn't flash on that side, the 15 Mile thing. It's on the going north. So I want to report that. The other thing I want to mention is I'd like to get an update what was discussed at code in regard to the pothole by the school, in the school zone there, an update on that. And the repaving on My Street, the 1000 block of Yaden, and the 1100 block of Yaden.
Okay. Mr. Pizzullo, would you like to provide an update, please?
Yes, let's start with the potholes that were in question were reported to PICO yesterday.
Pothole?
The PICO holes are very, very honest.
On the street?
On the street. They're reported, and they're being investigated today, and will be filled very shortly.
Okay.
The paving, the 10 and 1100 block of Yaden Avenue, a lot to be discussed between Mr. Nichols and Megan. We're working on it right now with liquid fuels, money, and what tie with the frame. It's not spring yet. We're waiting for the plants to open up for Blacktop. We're waiting for PICO, we're on it.
I'm sorry, is that for Church Lane?
No, that's Yaden Avenue, 10 and 1100 block of Yaden Avenue.
Because he did from Redwood to McDay, and he stopped.
Yes.
Okay.
Not for all of that.
Okay. And the pothole out here by the school, in the school zone?
This one over here has been reported to Pendot. And if they don't come out within the time of the action, we will fill out ourselves by tomorrow. And I reported it on Wednesday morning.
Okay.
I gave them a day or two, and then we'll take care of it. No problem.
Okay.
I don't understand.
I know.
Thank you very much. I have a question.
Mike, this, this is at 10, 1100 blocks. I also mentioned about Allen Drive at the end of those, that they have some, you know, holes there. Is that hand dressed off there?
Absolutely. It's all been addressed, correct. I may say to the folks. I know.
And there's also one on Bailey Road, right outside the cemetery, near the cemetery gates. It's a pretty bad one, too. Coming from Wycombe.
Okay.
On, right on the side where the cemetery is. So please check that out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Pizzullo, do you have a list of streets with potholes? Or you just make a list?
We've been at all potholes for the last, I bet you find links. Fully models, do I have a list? Absolutely.
Okay.
It's ongoing because of the weather and things.
Okay. I do believe Angora, the very last block, the dead end, it's pretty dilapidated.
That's.
In that area.
Not a pothole issue, but that's going to be a repaving issue.
A repaving issue?
It's going to be a repaving issue. We're going to see if we can take care of it with the fuels and the maintenance.
Okay, okay. Okay, so if anyone else have any concerns relating to potholes so forth and so on, please feel free to send Mr. Pizzullo an email. You okay with that?
I'm good, I said it.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other citizens' forms? All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like for the mayor to read his report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My report stands as submitted. I just want to point out that we did swear in three new police officers, full-time officers, at the mayor's forum February 27th, and they officially started on Monday. So that brings us up to full staffing of 20 full-time officers, which is great. And we'll have one more vacancy when a retiree is scheduled to retire in August. So we have 20 full-time officers and one part-time standing right there, Mr. Norman Norman, or Norman Rollins, sorry. He's been with us for a while, and we appreciate his service as well. That is it. The rest you could read. We did have a mayor's forum, as noted, last month. And Mr. Deans from the Willingpin School District gave us an update on some projects. And then we did have the swearing-in ceremony, so. With that, that ends my report, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Well, the next line of business is the President's report, and I do not have a report. Our President, Council President Monroe, she's traveling. So she did not leave a report. So we'll go to the next order of business, which would be the Solicitor's report. Oh, I'm sorry, my glasses. Okay. Managers' report, okay, all right.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Everything on our report for this week is personnel-related, which we had an executive session this evening. So everything will be posted on the legislative report next week.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we will have the Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Vice President. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
We like to, the council would like to report that they met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel and litigation matters. Solicitor's report, the Solicitor's office has been working on a number of legal matters, including the liens within the borough, the monthly Solicitor's meeting with the Borough Manager, Engineer, Council Vice President, and President, appealing for summary appeals for co-violations on behalf of the borough, preparing for trial with 1024 Church Lane, ongoing litigation with 548 Providence Road, updating the E codes website with the proper updated ordinances, working with the Parking and Borough Manager about parking permits and tickets, the demolition of 1219 South Longacre, as well as assisting in the land bank referral process. That ends my report.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, Tax Collector's report. Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. For the month of February, the Tax Collector's office collected $436,991.56 for real estate tax, for trash, $73,920, and for store, $194,954.80. That ends the Tax Collector's report.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Next order of business, Engineers' Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get started, I wanted to introduce you to somebody that's going to be helping with future projects. This is Rhonda from my company. You might see her at some meetings, in person here, on different projects. But I just wanted to put a face to the name as you start seeing her name more and more.
This is Yaden Borough.
Well, thank you.
I have a few items to present tonight, some action items for next week. First, it's going to be the announcement of an award for Yaden Borough for DCD multimodal program for an intersection improvement at Church and Myra. The borough received a grant award of $525,780. That grant does not have a match. It was a fully funded program. So they, Borough did receive that. I do want to let you know, too, we do have still a pending application for the Pendot multimodal program for the same scope of work that is still pending. So we could have received additional money as well, depending upon the award status of that project. This will be very similar to the ongoing work that we're currently designing for Church and Bailey, which include ramps, signal, pole crossings, just an overall intersection rehab. So we wanted to make that announcement first. The second one is, next week, we'll ask for approval for the County Aid Resolution. It's just something that has to be done in a public meeting in order to receive the funds that usually go towards the road program each year. So we can send you that standard template as well. And the last one, there is a DCNR application that is due April 2nd. In the past, you currently have projects related to community park that should finish out in the next few months. The next program is in April. We had previously discussed doing another round, which we're calling Phase Two. It would repurpose an application that we did a few months ago for the LSA program. It would include field restoration, rubberized surface on the play equipment, expansion of a second parking lot, and some stormwater features. If it's okay with you, we would need a resolution to proceed with that application at the meeting next week.
Okay. Any questions? I have some questions.
Mm-hmm.
I have one as well.
Okay. Can I start with my question? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Church and McDay, where are we with respect to setting up a meeting with Pendot to deal with what's been going on in that area for the past, I don't know, how many years?
So I'm going to start with, the actual project is still being delayed by Pendot. So I'll blame them for that, but I'm letting my answer the question regarding the meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You want to start with what?
I, let you answer that question first.
What question? My question?
Yes, your question with the meeting with Pendot is in the works. We have at least three or four individuals from Pendot that are going to come and meet with us, either via Zoom or team meeting, to discuss with whomever would like to be involved in this meeting, whether it's the whole council, constituents from the neighborhood. We're going to send out an email to get everybody involved, whether it's going to be onsite or Zoom. And they're going to answer all questions that need to be asked and concerned.
So. Our request was for a meeting to take place in person with some of the residents in that area that are directly affected by what's happening, right?
Correct.
So what I'm hearing now is they want to meet via Zoom?
No, these are options. Because I don't know that we're going to get all residents on a certain time. I don't know we're going to get all residents available. There's options for in-person, Zoom, or team meeting. We're going to, we're going to work this all out to make sure that everybody is available at a certain time. This is all in the stages of organization right now. There's no set.
But see, that's what's frustrating, right? Because we've been asking for this meeting for the past couple of months, right? And at first, we were told that the engineer was going to take care of it, reach out and try to schedule a meeting. Then we were told that that task was kicked back to the Borough Manager, and he tried to reach out with no success. Then we asked that last month meeting that the engineer pick it back up and reach out to Pendot and try to get this meeting scheduled. And now, today, we're being told, you know, we're going to have some options, some Zoom options and in-person options, and we don't have a date for the meeting. So I'm frustrated because we've been back and forth for months, and it doesn't take that long for someone to look at their Rolodex calendar or their iPhone or whatever, pick a date that they're available and a time to come to the borough at the scene and talk to the residents that had, that had their houses basically ran into every other month, and help this administration figure out what can we do with their help to alleviate some of this pain that they're going through. So I'm frustrated.
I understand.
Right?
I'm going to take full responsibility.
No, you're not going to take full, no, no, no. I don't want you to take full responsibility because this has been kicked back and forth for months.
I understand.
Who has another question, please?
I do.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you. On Rundell Avenue.
No, no, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Johnson, on this issue with respect to Church Lane and McDay.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Anyone?
Yes, yes, I have one thing to add. To add to Vice President Roquell's point, the, I want everybody to be clear as to the logic and the purpose of that is that a lot of things have been going around, and people have been looking at graphs and things and hard copy stuff. We need to be on the scene to actually see how the traffic is flowing, what is really happening. And if everybody got together, the residents involved, affected the engineer and Pendot, Public Works, and whoever else on council, we can actually see and come to at least a visual understanding of what we're working with so that we're not talking here and there or by graphs or this, that stuff.
Well, I've been down there with the residents.
Hold on, I'm not done. So we need to really be on the scene so that we could all see together. That was the purpose and the intent of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Truheart.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So my question is, with the back and forth, who is it at Pendot that you're communicating with to set this meeting up?
Paul Lutz.
And what is that, his position?
I don't, it's in my emails right now, I'm not sure. He is the head of safety.
District six.
District six, safety. So I spoke with him today, me and Mr. Kay. I gave the options of a Zoom and in-person and teams meeting just to get everybody together. I don't know that everybody's going to be able to meet onsite on McDay Boulevard at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday. I just, I'm trying to give options, and options are good. If you guys want an in-person meeting at McDay and Church, we'll make that happen, if that's what it's going to be. But when I make a meeting, and everybody's going to have to show up at a certain time. It's a lot for everybody who's important here that have lives and businesses and things going on to meet there. But if that's going to make it work, we'll make it work like that.
Well, honestly, this is important. So we would, we would need to make sure that we're available and that the residents are notified to be there to speak. But my point is, if this person is the one that's not coming back with a date, and this has been going on for quite some time, at this point, do we need to have our solicitor send a letter? Because we're talking about, this, I mean, literally, the properties have been run into by vehicles. Thank God, none of the residents have actually been injured or killed. So we can't have this going on and on and on and on. And I don't know what else can be done to stress to them the urgency and the importance of why we need to have an in-person meeting there. So my suggestion is, if he's not coming back, and I would give him a timeframe, we need to have a date by this. And if he doesn't, my question is, should we then, do we have the option of having our solicitor send a letter requesting a meeting?
Well, may I say?
Well, wait a minute. Okay. Wait one minute.
Solicitor, if you need our office to draft the letter, we can do that, yes.
Okay.
Well, may I say that if you call Representative Joanna McClintock's office, she will send her staff. I met down there with her when these accidents were happening. And her people were there, both of the people from Pendot were there. And the residents were all sitting out there. And they started working on it. Now, I don't know why this is taking so long, and I think you should call her office.
Can I put a request in for one day tomorrow? Give me until the end of business today, tomorrow, to have a meeting scheduled. End of story. I'll have a number and a date, but I need everybody to show up at this date.
Well, before you commit to that, Mr. Kay, you indicated at one of our prior meetings that you were reaching out to Representative McClintock. Any update?
Yeah, I've talked to him several times, phone, emails. So the gentleman that we were reaching out to?
In the mic.
I'm sorry, the gentleman that we ultimately were reaching out to all the time was the gentleman, yeah, just got on the phone today. So that was, that was the person that we were looking for. He also indicated, yes, he's not the primary guy, but he stressed the urgency that, you know, we'll have a set of dates in the very near future. And before he got off, Mr. Pizzullo made sure that, you know, he was able to commit to it. I'm confident about that. I know the frustration. So many people are frustrated. There's some neighbors that are. There's some neighbors that are, you know, ready to move out of the borough. That's the last thing you want. Yeah. So, yeah, so I believe... And give us a couple days to have a date. Now, I also think that, you know, we might be able to have more people attend a virtual meeting. You know what I mean? But if that's what it's gonna take to free up their availability, we're exploring all of it. We're exploring... We'll have a date by the next legislative?
By next week.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you're committing to. We're gonna have a date by next week.
Put money on it.
Okay. Counselor Beatty.
So my question is, you have your meeting, and what exactly are you asking PennDOT to do?
Exhaust, exhaust all opportunities for safety.
Okay, so if PennDOT is not responsive and moving... Because then what's gonna happen is, we need you to do dot, 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 dot. Then they slow walk fixing the issue. Then is the borough then gonna take action against PennDOT? Because we have to fix this issue for our residents regardless of what PennDOT is doing or not doing, in my opinion. So when are we gonna decide? Maybe we'll fix what we can within our ability, and then maybe we'll say, y'all bill, or sue you, or something, like what can we do on our end? Maybe that's a question for our solicitor. That is a question for our solicitor.
So as of right now, the solicitor's office hasn't been involved in this issue. So we can look into it, speak with the engineer, the Public Works Director as well as the manager, and want... Come up with possible potential avenues and alternatives if PennDOT is not compliant or willing to work with the borough. And so just have that on hand. I can draft a memo to just let me know what the options the borough is are. And then when we cross the bridge, we can get to it. But I can look into it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, because at this point, I feel like we're being disrespected as if we don't matter, you know? And again, you know, we have people in positions that, you know, that we expect to make things happen. But I just feel like, you know, we're being slow-walked, and that's not a good feeling. So Mr. Cave committed that by next week legislative, we're gonna have a date and time that this meeting is gonna take place, right? And I guess we can wait another week. I don't want to, but we can, right? And I appreciate, you know, all that you're trying to do to get it done. And you as well, Mr. Cave, but we need it to get done, right?
Sure. I agree.
We need it. Okay. Anything else you would like to share with us, Mr. Bazulo? No?
Not this much.
Okay. All right.
Megan.
I'm... Unless anybody has any other questions.
I do have another question. I have a question with respect to that fire that took place at that property located on West Hobbs Creek, the roof.
So in... I went back and forth with Rafi and Mike Bazulo, and we discussed first Code. Code does have to do their report first, which they did on Friday. And then I received some additional photos today that showed the roof in some more detail. So what we discussed doing was, I'm going to show those pictures to one of our structural engineers and see if he feels like it is something that is of extreme concern. Then we'll schedule that site visit and get that done. Until, if he feels like that is of major concern, we'll come out before the 30 days is up. If not, we will wait for that 30 days unless the property owner makes no action.
Okay. Thank you for that, Megan, but I will say that that doesn't make sense to me simply because we have a roof that has been continuing to collapse as each day goes by. I don't know why it's collapsing. Maybe it's due to the weather. I don't know. But what I do know is, it is a hazard, right? So I don't understand how we're being told that Code has to go out and give the property owner 30 days when you're dealing with an intimate danger, right? Pieces of the roof is falling to the ground, and we're being told that we have to give them 30 days. This is an immediate danger. So I'm confused by that. I'm confused that when your office was presented with this issue, right, and presented with the photograph, that someone didn't look at that photograph immediately and make a decision as to, yes, this is a problem. We need to get out there, right? Your structural engineer, you didn't show him the picture yet, right?
I have not, no.
So it's not an emergency to your office, right? It's an emergency to us, but not to your office.
For us, we have to go through the code process first. And I will defer to the solicitor. I do not know all the regulations surrounding that process and what the timeline is for everybody. At this point, because of all the concern that we have heard, we're gonna go through the structural engineer and show him the photos. And if it is of major concern, we will come out and take a look at it further. But we felt like we needed to make sure Code went first due to what our understanding of the process.
Mr. Cave, has the code department been out there?
Yes.
When?
A couple times a week. It's one of the properties that is on a regular review, a few times a week.
A few times a week? What are they doing? Just watching the roof? What are they doing?
You know, because it was a fire, you know, we're making sure that there's no other things that are, you know, on the grounds, any other code issues that could be arising. The Public Works team did clean the property, clean the outskirts of the property. But, you know, we're just observing it like we do with quite a few properties throughout the municipality.
We're just observing. We're not... I'm not hearing anyone saying that we're going out to check to make sure that it's safe, to make sure that it won't eventually collapse altogether. We're not... I'm not hearing that. Solicitor, if you have a house falling down, actively falling down, what do we need to do? Wait 30 days?
Well, there are procedures and different things that have to go through. So first of all, if the code department does not label it like an imminent danger, then there's only so much the engineer can do. So there are steps and procedures. So first and foremost, the code department or whoever the department is who is gonna secure the building, they need to label the property a certain level of importance. And so I think that's what Megan is saying, is that unless the code department labels it as an imminent danger, it's not giving a red flag to her department to say, okay, we immediately need to go towards it. So and because that's not happening, then the procedures within her department is saying that they have to wait 30 days. And so that's why she hasn't moved forward yet because she's working within the confines of the procedures that she has to abide by. So my understanding is that the code department may not have labeled it as an extreme danger right now, and that might be for their own reasons within their own codes. I understand it was a fire, but it may not reach the level. Maybe it's not dilapidated to a certain angle, or it's not... Maybe not 75% of the roof is missing or something. There are different procedures in play that may be why Mr. Cave isn't also labeling it as an extreme dilapidated state at this moment either. It's more of a domino effect. Certain things have to happen and be labeled different, like, parts before the next person can come in and do their job and the next person can do their job. So I would defer to Mr. Cave as to what are the codes or what is going on that this property isn't rising to the level of being an emergency risk at this moment.
I would like to know that too. Mr. Cave, you have that answer?
You know, I'm not a structural expert. However, I did, you know, take our proper procedures out of, as specified in the ordinances. I notified the homeowner, gave the 30 days, noticed that it had to be properly permitted and rented. In the letter, we deemed that a hazard. You know, I think also because it is also privately owned, and there are some limitations to some of the things that are in our toolbox to be able to do when it is privately owned, actively has insurance on it.
That is correct.
So there are some limitations as to us just, I think, taking the initiative and just going up there ourselves. You know, we walk by it every single day, and sure, it feels like we can just get it done and get it fixed. And, you know, I talk to the resident almost every day. And, you know, we stress the importance. We documented it appropriately. But, yeah, I think some things, like Mike said, do have to take some steps. I know I did get some feedback earlier on in the process about the structural integrity of the property. We do understand that the roof is exposed. But as far as the current risk to the public, from, again, my novice standpoint, it doesn't appear to be actively outwardly collapsing that are causing additional unnecessary risks to the public to where...
May I ask a question? Then what did our Public Works Department go out and clean up?
So there was glass, and there was post-fire debris on the immediate exterior. There was a lot of it, and...
You do know I have pictures, right?
No.
And it's not just glass. It was materials from the roof as well, materials from the roof, right?
Right, from the fire, absolutely.
Right. But when that fire took place, the initial cleanup crew came out. Then days later, the roof continued to collapse, and the debris hit the ground, and then we had Public Works go out there and clean up, right? So that roof was coming down, right? Because it was on the ground that our Public Works had to clean up. So right now, I feel like we failed. We failed. We're continuing to fail. Counselor Truheart, I'm sorry, but Counselor Truheart wanted to speak. And then Counselor Johnson thereafter.
So my question, thank you, Madam Vice President. My question was, do we have proof that there are pieces of the roof that are continuing to fall that have to be cleaned up? That's my first question. So has that happened more than once since Public Works said to come out and clean it up that time?
I personally go by that house every single day. I have not observed any additional anything that's fallen even from the strong winds. There was... And again, there was a vendor that went out there and went up there and did cut away two pieces of wood that were a little looser. And that was... Ever since, not... I haven't observed a single thing that's fallen off the property. But no, I'm gonna answer your question. No.
So I would just say... May I ask for any... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Thank you.
You said this properly, is property is currently insured. Am I right? Why is the borough, other than having a permit to repair the building, why is the borough even involved if the people have insurance? And why isn't the insurance company doing what they're supposed to do? I don't even know why we're having this conversation.
Because the insurance company is dragging their feet.
Well, that's why we, the solicitors...
Done is to make sure that that property is secure, especially the roof. That's all we're asking.
So if the company...
So I've spoken to the insurance company.
If the property has insurance, why shouldn't we have the solicitor notify the insurance company to do their job? That's what they're paid to do.
So I've spoken to the insurance company, and the homeowner also hired the services of an adjuster. The insurance company has started with the contracting work. Like, they've already, you know, it's been three months.
That's ridiculous. That is absolutely ridiculous that a house was on fire, and an insurance company has taken three months to get someone out there to fix that property? That's like a fee-in time. That's ridiculous. That should never happen.
The solicitor definitely needs to be involved in this one. That's because we're being disrespected, absolutely. And so is the resident. That's ridiculous. So are the residents. Not all of everyone. But everyone involved. Because that house is attached to another home.
That's my question.
You have other residents on that block?
That's a major issue. It really is.
But, you know, nobody seems to think it's, you know, a serious issue, which is ridiculous to me.
So, Madam Vice President, so this is my concern because it is attached to another property. And I understand with the insurance. But if the insurance seems to me, if this is a company, they would also wanna make sure that they send somebody out there to sure that the structure is solid because if it starts to damage the property next door, they're gonna have a bigger problem.
Absolutely.
So, you know, at this point, with that communication, if... And I understand the rules, you know, what Code has to do. I've seen the pictures, and I'm not an engineer, but I've seen the pictures. It looks pretty bad. And I would be concerned with, we're still in the winter season, and we've had some pretty strong winds, and if it continues to rain, it's gonna continue to cause damage because they haven't even taken the time to even cover the roof, which I've seen most insurance companies do, you know, they will cover it. That hasn't even been done. So, you know, at this point, I think there needs to be communication with that resident and their insurance to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. And, you know, it isn't gonna affect the property next door. It is.
And may I suggest, if the borough could get in touch with the resident next door's insurance company and have them, because like she's saying, that is not good because it will just make the other property push it more into damage. That is crazy.
The broken window theory. Thank you, Megan.
Oh, before you go, one other question.
Yes.
Rundell Avenue, I don't know if there's a void. Something is happening. When trucks come down that street, and sometimes even cars, you hear something inside your house. And I'm saying, what is that noise? It's like something's going on underground where it's almost kinda shaking your house where you're like, what is that? But it's something underground on, like, between the 800 and maybe, say, the maybe 936, 38. It's before you get down to where I am, but you can hear this noise. It's horrible.
There are storm sewers, which are 24-inch pipes that run down Rundell Avenue constantly.
But this is just starting. I've been there 26 years. I've never heard this before. Something's going on under the ground.
Traffic patterns change. There are trucks and cars. Who investigates where?
Please.
Sure.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay, you good?
Yep.
Good enough. Thank you, Megan.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Next order of business, we're gonna hear the finance report. Mr. Nichols.
Madam Vice President, we will be asking for motions to approve a cash balance report and a council favor report. We're also exploring banking relationships that we will present to the council before anything takes place or recommendations. That is my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cave, ordinance and zoning, please.
Yes, we're completing the rental inspection season. You can see with the rental certificates of occupancy, there's a lot of activity there. We're also entering into working on their houses season. So you see the building permits activity spiking up a little bit. One thing that we are exercising in with the code department is really focus on paving this upcoming month. We all go around the borough, you know, you see sidewalks, you know, have consistent issues as well as shared driveways. That's been a very high focus of ours over the past couple of weeks. And it looks like with the number of properties that we've been documenting, I think we're gonna continue that activity for quite a while. I think it's a growing issue. I've got to, the zoning piece office received and responded to two zoning use applications. Both were denied, one at 400 Maple for a before and after school facility and one at 725 Church for a smoke shop. And as you remember, a few months ago, council did a great job and with a solicitor to create this smoke shop ordinance to kind of delineate where smoke shops were permissible. This application was not in that permissible zone. So we subsequently filed the ordinances and denied it. And then just a further reminder of the ordinance about exterior property areas, sidewalks and driveways, that it is even the shared driveway. One thing that residents often say when we have an issue of violations is that they claim that they did not know that they own that part of the shared driveway. So that's one reason why they didn't take the extra step to maintain it. But we've been reminded and that's my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize, I do want to make one statement regarding delinquent real estate taxes. As we have been doing some reconciliations in the tax office for 2024, we noticed that there were a few duplicate tax payments that were made and there were some taxpayers who were turned over to Tax Plan Bureau. I'm going to tell us, oh, you just discovered this, maybe a week or so ago. So my comment to the residents is that if you receive a delinquent tax notice from Tax Plan Bureau and you paid your taxes, we are asking that you bring proof of payment to the borough and we will make sure that we have it stricken from the delinquent record. Again, as we did in internal audit, we did just find this in the tax office. So I wanted to get ahead of it because we had to turn that information over to Tax Plan and the number was significantly higher than the borough has ever, you know, turned over. But we know what we collected, that it should not have been that high. And we've started to discover that there were some duplicate taxes. So I wanted to make that statement publicly. We wholeheartedly apologize to the tax office, but we will remedy the situation. If you bring to us proof of payment, your clear canceled check from your bank, we will send a strike off letter immediately and the county will strike it from the delinquent list.
Thank you for that, everyone hear that, that's very important, okay? Who should they bring it to, anyone in particular?
Mr. Cave, Ms. Sapp or myself. Between the three of us, we will be able to take care of that.
Don't just leave it at the front desk.
No.
Please see one of those three individuals that were named, Mr. Cave, Ms. Sapp and Mr. Nichols. Thank you for that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, can I? Yeah, if it's something that is egregious in the numbers, that it's not just wanted to, if it's a lot effective, my suggestion is we may want to put it on the web or, you know, don't want to kind of point things out per se, but it might warrant justifying, maybe putting that information out if it's that egregious.
Agreed.
Great idea, thank you, yeah, yeah, great idea. Mistakes were made and we're finding them out and we're remanding those mistakes in a timely fashion. So thank you, thank you for that, all that are involved. Okay, public safety. Public Works. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Public Works. I must have had enough of Mike, I had enough of Mike today.
Next week, wear your other glasses.
You okay, Mike? Stop that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
A few things to mention. Number of emergency calls with police and the fire from the month of February. Windstorms, power outages, trees down. We assisted the fire and the police on both of these. We had an early morning accident with a truck versus a flagpole on our circle, which is being attended to with insurance, with PICO, with the post office. We lost a mailbox. We had a number of trees that had to be removed from residences from the windstorm from February 16th. Yard waste will be back in effect the 14th of March, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. E-waste is back, well, normally, the 28th of March, between 8:00 and 2:00 PM. There's one more thing, abatement. We've been enforced with code department with abatements. 700 West Cops Creek Parkway, we abated, which is the fire property. 107 Church Lane, the trash around dumpsters and the 700 block of Bullock Avenue with an ivy covering the full home on that. The update for the PICO gas project started Wycombe Avenue and McDavid Boulevard. Will be heading into our town within probably the next two weeks or doing some saw cutting. It's not being affecting us yet, but it will be affecting us soon within the next month or so and we will have that posted on the website and on Nextdoor and Facebook. Any other questions, please, throw them at me.
Yes.
Please.
There is a banner coming off on Bailey Road, right near the, where that pothole is that I was telling you about. The banner is halfway off, it's getting ready to fall off, so if you can check that out, please, thank you.
I have a question. When is the Public Works Department going to start the repainting of like the crosswalks, the stop, all of the painting in the street, no parking?
We actually started when the weather was nice in January. So we're continuing to do crosswalks, parking lots, handicap spots. So yes, that will continue right through the spring.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, that is my report.
All right, thank you. Okay, public safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
For the month of February, the Yaden Police Department responded 865 calls for service. We had five criminal arrests in the month of February. There was three non-traffic citations issued, 30 moving violations were issued, 972 parking tickets were issued. As the mayor pointed out, with your vote, we hired three officers. They hit the ground running on Monday, they're learning the streets. As we said several times, they're seasoned officers, they're from this area and they're really, they're adjusting well. So it's really good, they're fitting in well and they're getting to know the streets. Also, I had the pleasure of attending the aftershock program down in Darby on the 22nd of February. It was well attended, thanks to President Pratt who hosted it. It's a really good documentary, we're hoping to get to Yaden. I had a couple, I was invited to talk at the library, a couple occasions, some community meetings. And I'm going to be asking next week respectfully for a resolution for a DCE local shared gaming grant for $250,000. We were told that with this grant, with the resolution from council and with something else that an audit has to be sent over, that we're in good standing to get this grant for, it'll replace four vehicles. So I would ask for that next week. And any questions with the public safety end?
I have one question. How close are we to accreditation?
Right now, we're at 96% with our policies. So once our policies are enacted, then what happens is they'll come in, our accreditation team, and they'll do what's called a mock assessment. They'll ask, they'll go through and say, okay, you arrested this person, show us their arrest record. You know, they'll pull proofs just to make sure we're pulling the proofs. Then the actual state will come in and do the whole accreditation. So we're hoping by next year to have it. It's usually about a two-year process and we're on track.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Any other questions?
For emergency management?
Yes.
Just as Mike said, unfortunately, we got an alert today. Sunday, they're expecting strong winds in the area with severe thunderstorms. We're talking about 30 to 45 mile an hour winds, so just be prepared for Sunday.
I hope that roof don't collapse anymore.
We don't need no fire.
Okay, thank you. Fire depart, Fire Department's report? Go on from the Fire Department, okay? Planning Commission, Councilor Trueheart.
Oh, thank you. So yes, we have met, we have our new member. And what we have done, and I'd like to report, is we've gone through and to begin to take a look at, there have been several comprehensive plans that the Yaden has done and paid for for over the years. So what we're doing is we have pulled them all together, so we all have them, we can review them. And at our next meeting, and we have decided that we will be meeting, instead of monthly, we need more regularly because we really want to dig deep, dive into these plans to pull out what is still relevant. And then to begin to put together a plan because it doesn't make sense to do another one and spend more of the borough's money when we can pull from what we have. And that way, we're ready to come before the residents, we can really submit a good plan and highlight things that make sense. And then to get the input from the residents on whether they agree or disagree or, you know, there may be some other ideas. But there have been quite a few extensive plans and our newest member is wonderful because he comes with the background, not only was he a part of those way back when, but he comes from the background of urban planning. And so he really, you know, brings that area of expertise and lead us through. So we've begun to identify obviously the areas of importance that have been important to the borough for a time. Is the old Yaden Swim Club site and then we've got the Yaden Theater site, you know. So we're going to start with those two first and then go from there.
Okay.
And then also, just to add, we are also wanting to work in conjunction, and I'm not saying wanting, we have begun that process with the YEDC. So as they're working with, because we've got to put into plan and put into motion a plan that's really going to develop our business district, starting from the top of Church Lane all the way down.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. I have one question for you, Counselor. The recent breakfast that took place with the YEDC and I believe our borough manager was part of that. Can you just give us a little bit of feedback on that?
So the feedback I have, because that was brought to my attention after this act, and I did bring it up, why a member of the Planning Commission wasn't invited. But the topic of that meeting, it was with the YEDC, some of the business owners and also the Health Department because the issue was dealing with lead and lead base paint. That was really the topic of discussion at that meeting.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're moving forward, Counselor Beadie.
So my question is, you were saying that you wanted to build up the business district. Can we start with making Church Lane look a little bit more uniform?
Yep, that is all, that is definitely a part of that. And that's something that we want to, we as a planning commission, will work in tandem with the YEDC. Because for example, to get to the point where we can create a main street.
People there.
Right.
Yeah, I'm excited, thank you, yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, we have a really good team, so the residents that are, everybody is coming and bringing their area of expertise. My background is community and economic development. And so everybody is coming in and really adding to this, to do this. And then also, we can't do it alone from this borough. So making sure that we're identifying those partnerships outside of the borough that can help us do what we want to do.
Wonderful, wonderful, very nice, yeah, I'm excited, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, next would be recreation, Counselor Beadie.
Thank you, thank you. So of course, we are still in our planning phase of Flag Day. I just wanted to report to everyone that we did meet with the Soul District, so we do have to bring, like, to use the baseball diamond over at Kirkville. And we're going to do the drum show that we had been talking about for the last couple of months. So I am really, really excited for that. So just keep your eyes open for Flag Day announcements and, you know, once again, pass the word to your friends and your relatives to bring the whole family because there'll be something for everyone. So that is all for now, thank you.
One question, Counselor. Are you still accepting if people want to volunteer on that day?
Sure.
Has that process been done yet?
Yeah, absolutely, just shoot me an email and let me know if you want to join our committee. Most of the planning, to be honest, would you have done by me, myself, Roy and the committee. But if you want to just be an extra person to help that day, please let me know. We'll just make sure you get a shirt and we'll take care. And a sandwich, because Mayor, we want to ask you to buy a sandwich.
Okay, great, Mr. Hunter.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
A few quick things. The Rain Barrel Workshop that's scheduled for the 14th is full. It's filled up in a hurry and I think we have a number of Yaden residents who are involved in it. But we're going to have additional workshops in Morton Borough and some other locations later this spring. The Eastern Delaware County Storm Water Commission or Collaborative has been awarded two grants, one Growing Greener Together and the other called Growing Greener. So these funds will support all of the things we've done in the past with Stormwater Challenges, Rain Gardens, Pollinator Gardens, some other things going on. But it also is going to allow us to expand community gardens. So we'll be able to get some money for our vegetable gardens, which I think our people who are involved with that will really love. Let's see, what else? Oh, the maintenance of the Yaden Library, looking back at the ditch, it's sometimes called. The maintenance of the garden of the library and the Church Lane Rain Garden is scheduled for the next month. So we will have some updates on that, getting into that particular season. Hopefully, it'll rain a lot so we can use these rain gardens to show that they really work. The Free Havreford Rain Garden Workshop was well attended and we had a number of Yaden residents there. I think there were over 100 people who attended that workshop on March 1st at the Havreford Recreation Center. The Storm Water Collaborative now has a website and the website will include a lot of opportunities for interaction with the public, information, videos, how to grow, how to start your own rain garden, gardening. All of that information will be on that particular website. The community park is nearly finished, I think Megan talked a little bit about that. The issue that we're going to have in community parks this year is how do we manage all the people who are coming? I was out there the other day, they had 80 people out there. We do need some type of laboratory.
Facility.
Facility out there, it's really unbelievable. Kids have nowhere to go, the bathroom, parents, people are there all day. I was out there on Saturday and people were there all over the place. So we have to take a look at that to see what we can do to handle that situation. Lastly, YAA is having their basketball winter playoffs, Wednesday night, tonight, tomorrow night and Saturday afternoon at Bell Avenue Elementary School.
Wonderful, Mr. Hunter, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, everyone. I'm sorry, may I have to speak about the veterans?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I want to let residents know that the Hometown Heroes Banner Program is starting. It will be $159.90, which is cheaper than it was about a year and a half ago when they started. It was about $200 then. That is for the banner, it is for the hardware, for the poles. And your picture will be put on next to the banner. And we'll have information on the website so that people can start sending a check or a money order for their banner. It is revenue neutral to the borough. So veterans, come on out and get your banners, thank you.
Oh, thank you, when did that start?
It's starting now. I mean, the Hometown Heroes Banner has been going on for a couple of I mean, the, the Hometown Heroes Banner has been going on for a couple of years.
Right.
But Yaden is, we're going to, uh, get into it now.